From PAC 3165 with Dean Moberg and all of the kids here tonight, they're going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Scouts attention. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dean, could you tell us why you brought the scouts here tonight?
The Cub Scouts are working on their citizen achievement. Part of the requirement is to study city, community, government, et cetera, elected officials. So graciously invite us this evening to observe the Board in action. So we're here tonight. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Dean. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Any comments or corrections, informational items that we need to know about? I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Very good. Danielle, anybody would like to speak from the audience?
No.
Okay. Megan, you're up.
I think I will.
Okay.
I'm gonna stand right here because I've got Meg's visual aid to kinda walk through a few things. Report on the new high school, things are moving along well. Had a few little weather issues, but we've moved through those and the forecast looks good now, so we're moving right along. Earthwork, rough grading is complete around the building itself. The excavators working on grading roads and parking lots now. And they've completed demolition of the existing farm buildings. And that will turn them loose to start grading for the soccer fields. And then from there, they'll continue to move west with site grading. Site utilities, storm sewer lines, and area inlets are in basically around the building itself, which is great. And that has helped us a bunch with these recent rains because it's channeled the water to the inlets and got it down to where it needs to go instead of on the building pad. Also, starting here in the next couple of weeks on site sanitary lines and site waterline work, so site utilities are going well. Foundation work has started. Area F, which is basically this area right here, the footings are in, they're complete. Area G, the footings are about 50% complete. There's a mechanical pit we're working on here, and I'll show you some pictures of that here in a minute, and an elevator pit. This week, we are moving up into this area, which is area E, footings, and then we'll turn and come down area D. The other thing we're working on, there's a, between F and E, there's a foundation wall as we step up. This lower level steps up to this upper level. So we've basically got a retaining wall, separates two levels, that retains the dirt here. So we're starting wall forms in that area. So foundation work's going well. We should begin under slab plumbing in area F and G and under slab electrical yet this week. And we're shooting at the slab on grade board in this lower area by the first of December, which would be great. What else? The structural steel, hopefully we have structural steel. This area, basically the classroom, the academic area is all structural steel. We should be starting on that hopefully by late December, maybe before Christmas. So you'll actually start seeing something come out of the ground finally. And then this area is mainly precast walls. We've started the engineering and shopnoring process on all this area. And that'll be probably March before that delivers. So, but the precast, when it goes up, it goes really fast. The steel takes a little more time, so. A few photos, this photo is looking kinda towards the southwest, towards the creek. And what you're seeing, you can kinda see the column pads in the middle and then the perimeter footings, the concrete footings around the outside. You're looking basically down through this area here, area F. Let's see, go to the next slide. This is over in area G, the big hole with the wall forms, that's a mechanical water holding pit, cooling pit. If you, you see where the orange blankets are, that's actually the elevator pit. We just poured it, so it's covered with insulating blankets, just gets a little bit. Now we gotta keep the concrete warm until it cures. And then the space between there, basically between there and the mechanical pit, where that, where the cursor was a second ago, that's, that's kinda the pass-through into the courtyard, if that kinda makes sense, so. Next one. This is the backside of the first wall form that's set, and that is this area between E and F. So you can see how the grade rises. So this area's down at level one, and then we jump up to level two right here, and that is the first part of the retaining wall. So hopefully we get that poured later this week, and then we'll be off and rolling on Another photo of some footings, that area off to the right, it's kinda hard to tell, but that is the courtyard area. You're looking basically, if you're standing right in this area, so you can kinda see the courtyard where the cursor is. These are ironworkers tying the rebar, mats getting ready, trying to get the rebar tied out in front of the walls, so when we're ready to stay in the wall form, we can swing a madder rebar in, butt it up, and keep going. So we're trying to kinda pre-tie some of this rebar. That's just a picture of our, kind of our staging area. We've gunned all the rock down, just making it really nice with the rain, because we can kinda keep moving. And if we can't dig footings, at least we can pre-tie rebar and do things like that on rain days.
I know you have a bed in there. Do you have cable too, in your trailer?
Also, an area inlet, storm sewer drains, so that helps to drain the site, so it's just surface drainage. One more photo, another area inlet, so. They may not look important, but these things are saving grace during the winter months on the job site, take care of that water. So our excavators done a great job getting those in. Is that all the pictures?
Yeah.
Hopefully I'll have some more interesting pictures coming up, but it's really just concrete and utilities right now.
Last month, you made the comment that they were gonna be working on dirt over by the football field?
Yeah, and they're moving that way, they're moving that way on rough grading, so. They, we've kinda started up by the soccer fields and moving towards that. Haven't quite got there yet, but they're working that way.
Any questions?
Was there gonna be a camera setup?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yep, there should be real soon.
Okay.
We've got internet now, and we're trying to get, and we've got a pole mounted up by the trailers, which is sitting up in this area, so hopefully that'll give, and it's gonna, it should have a zoom fixture, and it should have a panning feature on it. I was just talking to the site tech today about that, actually, trying to get that set up, so. Yep.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Keep moving. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Seems like you were just here.
It does seem that way, doesn't it?
It does.
But I've changed my name. I'm now Carlinan Long. Did everything else? My name is Jim Long, and my firm, Carlinan Long, came into the annual audit for the district for last year, and we can sit this letter aside for the moment. And there have been a few changes regarding the audit presentation for the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide and the State of Kansas, so take a look at that report. Has some bold features on there that says what your responsibilities are and what my responsibilities are. The next page, sort of right there in the middle, it says there's an adverse opinion in here, and that's not a good thing, but it's an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles. And of course, leave out that every year, which you allow it to. So the opinion right below there, on regulatory basis, is a clean opinion, there's no problems or exceptions noted for, for that. Flip over to page four, which is a landscape page. Kinda gives you the old snapshot of cash in, cash out, beginning balances as of July 1 of '12, and ending balances for June 30 of '13. This one used to have a big negative balance up at the top because the state hadn't given you any money. Well, they finally decided to let that accounting procedure go away and just call that a deposit in transit. So you see in the third column, general, from the end, and the general fund is a zero. That's the way it is, and it always should be, and that's a good thing, everything's been used or transferred to other funds. So you can kinda go through there and see the beginning balances, ending balances, and which funds went where. Also down in the right-hand corner, you see where that money is. The other thing, there were several pages behind there. We used to talk about the budget compared, budget and actual comparisons. Those have been now moved farther down the road, so the notes of the financial statements are next. There are narrative description of policies and procedures. Take a look at page 11. Note five, as far as stewardship compliance and accountability. We're doing it no violations of Kansas statutes. I also point out that on page 12, transfers. A lot of times, money will be going into the general fund, and then we move to the other particular funds as needed. Take a look on page 13. Since we made that change from a big negative balance to the zero number, that note 11 sort of describes that factor happening as far as, hey, the balance was negative 994, but now it's zero for the general fund. That's just sort of telling everybody, hey, we're changing this up just a little bit. And then the supplemental general changes are also listed there. If you want to know what the, the state didn't give you on June 30th, it's in the note right below there. They decided to hang on to that till July 7 of '13. Page 14, the last note to the financial statement is the schedule of debt. Changes for that, you know, some refunding, pay downs, schedule changes. All those are sort of detailed up there at the top. The payout down there at the bottom, as far as principal and interest goes, for the next five years and the five years after that.
There's really a big one in there now.
It's a good rate, good interest rate, can't argue with that. Page 15, we used to have this one up front. Again, it's sort of just lists out the budgeted funds down the left-hand side, the budgets, expenditures are in the second to the last column. Those negative numbers are now under budget. It's not a negative item, it's just you underspent your budget by all those things. You can always underspend your budget, that's not a problem. Refund the budget?
Same thing at home, right?
As far as the detail about all the funds, revenues and expenditures, start on page 16 with the general fund. And again, sort of down there at the bottom, it says, start it with zero, ends with zero. That means everything's been either transferred or moved to other funds as applicable. Can kinda go through those and take a look at the cash balances, how they changed. There's no, nothing really jumped out at me as far as that goes for any of those. On page 29, with the bond and interest fund. And in relation to all the financing and changes there, cash balance jumped up a bit. Probably getting used to it too. The next few pages, there are several non-budgeted funds, so each column is a separate fund on those. Difficult to, I'll continue to observe, we're changing that one, but. And then quite a few, a couple of federal funds. Pages 32, 33, and 34 are the agency funds. Money's held at the high school or middle school or elementary school. Again, all those funds are detailed there as far as beginning balances, receipts and dispersments and ending balances for all those particular. If they're an agency fund, they're being held for somebody else. If they're a district activity fund, such as on page 34, it's kind of an activity that might be a district activity, or no, it's not necessarily related to a group of students or any other group. The two reports at the end are clean opinion over federal financial procedures and policies. Didn't have any trouble in any of the testing there. Couple pages back is a schedule of federal assistance. It's 29, but my reports aren't numbered, but. This is federal funds only as far as what's on this list. The other, the other federal information at the back is, again, clean opinion, there's no problems or exceptions noted in any of that. Who's page at the front? It's a letter from me to you guys. Says that I'm gonna do an audit. On the second page, up at the top, it says difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Encountered no significant difficulties. Let's put that dang conversion process.
We knew that was gonna come up.
Almost swore. But once we identified everything that was going on, how it all got put together, I mean, the several that I've seen have always been just, okay, let's sit down, see how this is going, startin' to finish, and so. A little more time, but, you know, until we get done.
Tell you up the coffee.
A lot, a lot of free coffee.
The second year's always smoother, isn't it, after a conversion?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Then we're, I mean, all the reports that we used to look one way, that are now a different way, are identifiable from the get-go, and also you don't have a part in each system that you're not quite having to deal with anymore, so thank you. Lot more.
We did the conversion in the middle of the phys career, so we had two different, like, two different languages kinda going on at the same time.
We had three months of one language and nine months of this one. But like I say, everything, everything was available for us when we came to take a look, and we didn't have any choice getting through stuff, except for that scenario, which is, happens every once in a while. Tell you about the 15th one I've seen, so.
So just out of curiosity, how many school districts do you work with?
I think I'm up around, between school districts and special ed co-ops, I think I'm around 15 or 16 right now.
Are they all clean reports, or?
Um, you know, we run into one or two that are not, but the majority of them are. And mainly it's because the state kinda runs roughshod on you. I mean, you can only get the money in a certain way, and so a lot of times, what used to be, oh, a check has been mailed to you, and then it has to be processed and put in the bank, well now it's just direct deposit to the bank. And so a lot of procedures and controls are sort of maintained in a different manner than they were a long time ago. I'd say, I have two or three that are, that are always kinda borderline, that's, that are like, nah, do we need to mention this, or do we need to change that? But a lot of my bigger ones are, are just, you know, like I say, they're, they're kind of down to where all the procedures are enforced, and there's enough internal controls in place where it really kinda says, okay, are the controls working, therefore the corresponding reports are gonna be okay. So some of it is testing that. And, you know, food service is one of those that we've kind of, as technology has increased, has had a good benefit because people can now get online to pay those things, and, you know, people aren't walking in with a check or cash, and that's always kind of the scary ones, the ones that, we still do a lot of cash, it's like, ooh, why? But, and they just don't wanna make a technology leap. And those are the ones where I kinda, I kinda spend a little more time thinking, okay, what's, what's going on? Because what is happening at the, you know, at the district level? Or, you know, the activity funds, you know, gate receipts, I always kind of, you know, take a second and take a deep breath when I see those, and kinda go, well, you know, what are we doing for those to make sure that, you know, the district's getting the money that's, that it should be getting and for those procedures? So have a few that I kinda, sometimes I go to a high school game, and, not my high school, and I go and I kinda hang out in front of the, you know, the box and see what's going on, and check out the procedures. You know, it's like, well, it's kinda strange when you go to Tongan Oxi's football game, and it's like, I don't know anybody here. But I'm hanging around, going, yeah, okay.
Watching the people with the money.
Yeah, let me go to the concession stand, and, but I do that, you know, four or five times a year for certain places, and just wanna make sure that that's happening in the right manner, and, you know, ticket sales and whatever. I kinda inquire about, you know, what fraud considerations there are, because I don't wanna be, you know, have this scenario where, you know, the activity fund is now in the paper because the treasurer did whatever. Those are the ones that are kinda crazy. And we look at the expenses of the bills too, we pull a sample of expenses and make sure that, you know, they're all supported by appropriate documentation. I mean, my smaller districts, I can actually feel better about the expenses because they know everybody, and they know everything. And, I mean, you guys are probably in the top size that I do, but again, I mean, if something weird was going on, everybody'd go in and go like, wait a minute, it'd just be kinda sticking out. So those are the kinds of things. Went to a seminar, and they said, the auditing firm was auditing, auditing the school district in New Orleans, and they decided to test payroll. And they said, okay, today, or this payroll, everybody's gonna come pick up their paychecks. They said, no, we don't want that to happen. It's like, well, okay, we're gonna give you a qualified opinion, because we don't know if all these people are actually employees. So they said, okay, pick up your paychecks, and they ended up with about four or 500 extra paychecks. So it's kinda like, huh, what's going on? My small districts, of course, when they have 50, 60 employees, they kinda know what everybody, you know? But anyway, that's, that was kind of a little procedure that they did to make sure that all the employees were real and legitimate. And then the question was, where were those direct deposits going? So got interested pretty fast down there.
Yeah.
But those are the kinds of concerns when you have a really large organization like that, though, that, you know, you kinda say, well, what can be going on, what is going on? But here, we don't really have that problem. It's kind of all, that's why I don't do Topeka Lawrence, K C, K C K. I don't, I don't do the super big ones, because they, typically their accounting's really messed up, and it's a major endeavor to put one of these guys together. But kinda where I stay is, you know, it's not too bad, again, we can kinda see everything and get our arms around everything, and make sure all the procedures are happening that need to be happening. Everybody know what's going on as far as any legal, you know, compliance requirements as well.
Good. Any more questions for Mr. Long? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can we do a motion to accept the audit?
Oh. I move that we accept the audit as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Very good. 4.2 application and certificate for payment.
As promised, they're getting a little bigger.
Wow.
And it'll continue for a while. The process, just again, to kinda recap, McPherson puts the pay app together, and expenses and so forth, that goes to the architects, they go through it, make sure everything's kosher, then it comes to us, and then we go through it, Danielle and Mike will go through it, and, and then it comes to the Board for approval, so.
Any questions about that? I move that we pay the pay application as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Very good. Randy, you wanna talk about the enrollment report?
Well, every year, Danielle produces this page, it's kind of a one-page Gestalt view, kinda shows you where the enrollment's been and what we believe it's gonna look like for this year. And the good news is, you know, our, our growth is, is kind of a steady progressive line of development, if you take it over a 10-year period. It generally averages about 3% per year, but you have little dips and so forth in those 10 years. And like for this year, you might see 20, 23, something like that, decline in a head count. But generally, that, we're gonna, like this next year, we're gonna be ahead when you put all the weightings in. But let's say, just so for argument, we drop 25 kids, would that mean we'd lose a bunch of money? The law's still in the fact that we get to use this year's enrollment, or we get to use last year's enrollment, or we get to use an average of this year and the preceding two years of enrollment. So there's no fear there. Like this year, I think it might be 2027 down in terms of head count. And, and here's a number that you might look at. Like, we budgeted 2,600, we came in and audited head count 2,576, so 24 students. But if you look down at... So, 24 students, but if you look down at the waitings, then you see where that kind of balances out. Actually, we might come out ahead, still, even though head count is low. The other thing that we did this year, and Danielle's pretty wise to do this, is we left out LEAP students. And, so that'll affect the head count as well, but the good news about that is, some of the fees we pay and dues are based on student numbers, and it isn't fair to count the LEAP kids in those, anyway. So we'll add those back later, and actually, we'll save money on some dues and so forth. So, basically, that said, I don't know if you know all the kind of codes and the acronyms. LINKS, you know, that's our program that deals with kids until they're 21 years old over here on the west side of the building. Open to any questions you might have about it.
That's just informational, we don't intend to act on that one.
Yeah, just informational item.
So, building grounds and equipments, a lot of reports there from community relations, the project manager, technology and transportation, any questions for Randy on any of those?
Everybody pleased with the reports, kind of the template version, and we're going to add a few more come January. And, so you should be getting, I like good holy numbers, but you should get about seven reports each month, beginning in January. That'll give you various information about the departments. One of the things that I've always thought we should have is a food service report, and I think it might be interesting for you to know how many students we feed every day, and how many adults, and those kinds of things. So, it's good information, it's information we have, anyway. So putting it together in a report kind of keeps it more fresh with people, so.
I noticed that we have cameras in our buses.
Yep, we, we're not, not all of them, but we started putting them in a few at a time last year.
How is that information archived? Is it on a CD and saved for a period of time, or does it rewrite?
It's all digital, and then it rewrites eventually, and I think we set it up in two weeks. We may not hear about an incident for a few days after it occurs, and they're the, they're the great equalizer in debates, when you get misinformation. And a lot of times, we get misinformation and we find out the truth. So, but, about two weeks, and we don't keep it. And the other thing that some people might ask, well, who gets to see these? And it's only need to know. And even if a parent would like to see their child behaving in a certain manner, we generally will not show that video to that parent, because other students would be in the video, unless I have permission from every one of those students' parents. But, we can tell them what we see on the video. And the other good news about this is, we had a vehicle rear in one of our buses last year, and it was all captured digitally, so we could tell what kind of impact occurred on the students, was there a jar? The good news about this one is, you really have to know when the vehicle hit to even be able to tell that the bus was hit by a vehicle. And, so there's some good information.
Good. Number six, administrative reports, any questions or comments on those? Those are really nice. It obviously takes a lot of time to do that, but it's really nice to keep up with what's going on in all of the different buildings and locations.
And what I like, too, about all of these reports is, we end up with a really good repository of information. And, you know, five years from now, when Beth's wondering what we did in November of 2013, she'll be able to go right to one of these reports and read that information, so. Having a good bank, a data bank of information is always a good thing.
Dan, a couple months ago, we talked about Skyward, and how everybody's using Skyward to put their lesson plans on, is that going better, and teachers are getting on board, and?
I believe so. That's, at the start of school here, it's always a new process for all of us, looking at the other schools, for example, look at how the middle school does it, I know the high school has a lot of those conversations of, middle school uses Skyward almost exclusively for parental information. And then, how can we, once that becomes an expectation as a parent, you know, from the middle school, I know the high schools have a lot of those conversations in their steering committee, to look at that, and try to ease the transition, and they have a lot of conversations about that, ease the transition to the high school, for parents, because all of a sudden, they aren't getting the same information. So, that's definitely something we can, we can look at for all of them, see, it's really parental survey, what do they see out there? Do we possibly send out a survey from Skyward if we're like?
Well, from this parent, there's some teachers that do an absolutely phenomenal job. And weekly updates, here's what's going on, and then there's other teachers that we haven't heard from.
Right. But I think that we see that.
Yeah, if we could pull them up a little bit, they don't need to send something out every week, but...
Or they want it down?
No, we don't need to pull them down, we can leave them there, that's fine, but, you know, best practice, disseminate the best practice, and...
And I think the large part, too, as a kid goes through the system, it's no different from fifth grader to the sixth grader. I can tell you as a parent, as a sixth grader last year, I didn't look at Eric's grades for an whole semester, you can call me a bad parent if you like, and he asked for grades, and so we had that conversation. And I think that some of that is, you know, Eric, how can you check, and how can you do, and how can you, you know, grow? His grades got considerably better when he moved on. And now, you know, he does his homework, and, but yes, that's definitely something we can look at, and look at.
Alrighty. Board policy update.
Periodically, we get recommended changes to board policy from the staff of attorneys at Kansas Association of School Boards. The big one that seems to be this time is including disability in with harassment-type issues, and you can kind of see these through there. If you look at the red, mostly what they're adding is disability in terms of harassment. And then there's a few more, if you go down to child abuse with law enforcement, every, you know, DCF has to be, it used to be SRS has to be notified if they're under 13, and then, in most cases, and this applies to truancy as well, if they're truant under 13, we report that to DCF. But above that, then you report it to law enforcement or the county attorney. If, there was a good faith one, people that have to make a report, and by law, they have to, if they suspect child abuse, they've added the word "good faith" instead of accordance with state law, and that is, it has to be made without malice and shall be immune from civil liability. So, if a teacher suspects child abuse, you know, and they make that report in good faith, they need not fear recourse after they make that report. Communicable diseases, it's kind of interesting that, it seems like we've addressed this now throughout my career for like 30 years. Every state employee that works in schools has to be subject to a TB test, tuberculosis, that's about the extent of the testing pre-employment, but if we were to suspect or be notified, then we have to take measures to protect the kids and the rest of the staff. And, it's a little tricky. Policies are always thin and designed for protection, but also designed to be thin in terms of, you know, interpretation and that kind of thing. But there are lots of HIPAA regulations that would be associated with that. If this were to ever happen, there would be a lot more to do procedurally wise than what policy might reflect. If they are gone, and we suspect communicable disease, we can request an examination or a physical. Service animals, they're allowed in schools, kind of makes sense, they're allowed just about anywhere now. Truancy, here's a truancy thing, and one of the graphs, I love this graph, one of the things, a counseling session that you might do with a 16 or 17-year-old who decides they're going to drop out of school, is we always get to show them the kind of money they can expect to make less than others who finish school. And, I just think it's kind of an interesting graph. But one of the things, they always gravitate to the money side of it, oh, I'm going to make this much less per week, I'm going to make this much more per week if I get a bachelor's degree, but look at the unemployment rates, I think that's even more telling than the differences in money. And if you look down there, less than a high school diploma unemployment rate, that's really high. And it's just very, very difficult to get a job without a high school diploma. And the trend that, this is anecdotal, but my observation is that, without some kind of post-secondary training, it doesn't have to be a college education, I think that's becoming equivalent to what the high school diploma used to mean in terms of employability. So, kind of an interesting graph. Interrogations, a lot of the school safety stuff now is including law enforcement, school resource officers, those kinds of things, and we have, we had good policies about when we question students, when we interrogate, when we investigate, and now, if we're involving one of those people, we need to have a policy that allows for that, and that's pretty much what the red, red is. Weapons, this is, this one's interesting, too, because I'm not sure that, I don't think I've had one since I've been here, but I've had them in other districts. If, you know, the weapon will, can include the taser, now, which, you know, makes sense, but if there's a long-term expulsion, the superintendent by this policy will be the hearing officer. I don't know if you read down it that far or not, but, there's more disability stuff. So...
Probably fine, since they'll appeal to us.
Yeah, yeah, so, if, here's the thing, if we get a long-term suspension or an expulsion currently, we use anyone from our pool of administrators from a different attendance site, different school, that will serve as the hearing officer. If it involves a weapon and a full-year expulsion, then by this policy, it needs to be me serving it. And I like this, because a, there's airsoft guns that may look like a gun, I've read in the paper and I've seen on the news that sometimes kids get an entire year out of school, and I think we need to use good judgment in that case. And I'm here to tell you, and I think Chief Wayman agrees, a hammer is a much more lethal weapon than an airsoft gun. But the other thing that we'd have to look at, and I'm just kind of giving you a little bit of information, is what's the intent? You know, if, last week, in one school, a student forgot, left his pocket knife in his pocket, and ended up getting kind of a harsh consequence, the very first thing I think we would want to look at was, what was the intent? We can't stop thinking about that. It can't be binary system of on-off switches, yes, no, black or white, because we can train monkeys to do that. And, we need administrators who think, and look at the entire situation, and then determine, was there real danger, what was the intent, and that kind of thing. So, not to get up on a big soapbox, but that's kind of the idea behind the policy. Makes sense?
Yep.
You guys tired of hearing the Skype button? We keep losing him, that's, so, there you have it, Dr. Weller.
Any questions or comments about the policy revision recommendations? I move that we accept all of them as presented. Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I heard him say aye, didn't you?
Uh-huh. Kansas Correctional Facility transfer of counter cyclical payments.
I love this when it happens, that all of a sudden, you get a bunch of money from things that you didn't expect. Last summer, we received a letter, and the Department of Corrections, they have a kind of a farm thing going on over there, and they wrote some grants and proposals and so forth, and, actually, not all of that money's in there, let me see if I can give you the... Well, what they found out is that they're not eligible to actually receive it, and, but the school district is, and as long as it goes for students. And so, here's a, that's the grant, that's the wrong one. So, we said, well, sure, we'll take it, and wrote a letter to that effect, but the board asked to accept it, and, as you can see, it's, you know, a little over $22,000. And that's a lot of jalapeno peppers and all that, growing in gardens and so forth, but we're very proud of them, number one, for the hard work and the effort and labor that goes into all of that, and we're even more proud to recommend to the board that they accept both of those checks, so.
Any comments about that? Is this money that's shared with other districts, or did they just pick us?
It's totally and exclusively Lansing's. And I might add, that in the letter, we made assurances that it's directly tied to students as we can be, meaning in the classroom, iPads, those kinds of things, so. And plus, we doubled the Board of Education's salary.
Cool. I move that we accept a check for $5,533 and $16,860 from KCI for the transfer of counter cyclical payments.
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. The after-school grant?
Mary Ellis, again, has written the grant, and it's, needs to be approved by the board for the JJA, I believe that's what it's called, and, for the after-school grant, and the amount of it is $5,222.
Any questions for Randy on that? That's pretty much a yearly thing that we've been getting for several years now.
Pretty much.
I move that we accept the $5,222 grant for the JJA Lansing After-School Village Program. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Very good.
Historical review.
Now, this is pretty much a draft version, but, I can't remember how long ago, but Jan kind of took this on, she's our resident historian, been here about 39 years, keeps all this information, and each year, we try to update it, and then we'll make it available to everyone, but we'll print, we'll print a few nice hard copies for you as well. But everything you would want to know about our schools, our school district, upcoming facilities, Board of Education, and then history, kind of the staff and so forth, but take a look at the draft when you get a chance, if you see things that need to be corrected, I always need to know that. It's getting rather large, and it's difficult to just sit and read it and proof it for one person, we try to have several people read it. But, you know, if you want to know who's on staff, who are our drivers, we, you know, remember, this changes... remember, this changes, personnel changes almost daily sometimes. But most of that will be available to you in this book. And then the special ed staff, they're in there certified. And then let's move, you know, you can see boards of education through the years, and like you could go back to 92, I think it's 80, 65. This is good information to keep. And some people will remember that. Not, not I, but in 65, there'll be somebody around. And if you run into Gene Young and you have this book in your hand, you can ask him, you know, did you know, and he'll tell you all about it. And that's, that's the truth. So take a look at it, see what you think. There's some really neat things in here. Superintendent review, if you want to know superintendents back to 65, assistant sups, principals, and then some of them. Financial, you can see what the valuation was, what the mill rate was early on. Enrollment, enrollment takes two pages. This is, you go into the last page and you can see this one, then you'll end with unaudited leaps in there. It's interesting about LEAP, it's a dropout recovery program. And if you really do your job, those numbers should go down, shouldn't they? Which, so to me, that's kind of telling. You get into the next two years of that, they're even lower. We have some old pictures in there, and we did not get a permission from any of these people here to put their picture in there.
You're assuming they're still around.
So, but Jan actually knows some of them, so, and, you know. Now, she gets really angry when I go back too far and ask her if she knew them, but so you have to be careful with that, but. But there's some neat Delaware school, y'all hear about Delaware school quite a bit. And not so old, but Hazel Dell, have any of you heard of Hazel Dell? So neat old pictures. And all credit to Jan and to Lori with the museum. Here we go. The Lansing Historical, I think her name's Laura Philippi. She's running the museum over there. And none of us helping out Jan now with this thing. So the good news is, we're starting, we've started a tradition. And generally, what I find out in a smaller town is if, once you do it a year or two, it's tradition. So it's probably not going to stop. We're going to keep producing this thing. Anyway, that's for your review. You get a chance, take a look at it. If you see any errors, let us know. And good, nice color printed copies are coming your way probably next board meeting. Information item.
I move that we enter executive session for a period of 15 minutes to start at 8 o'clock to discuss non-elected personnel matters affecting students' confidential, financial data, negotiations, et cetera.
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're celebrating Beth Stevenson's birthday this evening. It's her 28th birthday, is that correct? There's cupcakes over here, and you need to help yourself. I tried them out, and they're good. So help yourself to those. Please don't leave any. Leave one for Beth.
State. So we have no resignations and retirements and no appointments. 2013-14 out of district students?
I move that we approve the out-of-district students as presented.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. 2013-14 substitute teacher list?
I make a motion that we accept the 2013-14 substitute teacher list as presented.
Any questions or comments? You can second, I'm sorry.
No, second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Just a reminder, we have a board retreat this Thursday at 6 o'clock. Do we have dinner?
We can do dinner if you'd like dinner.
Does everybody need dinner at 6 o'clock? Are we okay having dinner before we get here and go right into the meeting? Let's not have dinner.
Okay.
But let's have some snacks and beverage.
Soda, some cookies.
Okay.
Yeah. All righty. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?